All right. It is now 7:00 PM, and I'd like to call the regularly scheduled meeting of the Beloit City Council to order. It is Monday, October 21st, here at the Forum at 100 State Street, Beloit, Wisconsin. Roll call.
Roll call shows all councilors present.
Number two is Pledge of Allegiance. Will you please stand?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three, Special Order of the Day announcements, 3A.
A proclamation declaring the week of October 20th through 26th, 2013, as Freedom from Workplace Bullies Week.
Mr. Vice President.
Whereas the city of Beloit has an interest in promoting the social and economic well-being of its employees and citizens, and whereas that well-being depends upon the existence of healthy and productive employees working in safe and abuse-free environments, and whereas surveys and studies have documented the stress-related health consequences for individuals caused by exposure to abusive work environments, and whereas abusive work environments can create costly consequences for employers, including reduced productivity, absenteeism, turnover, employee-health-related expenses, and if left unchecked, costly litigation, and whereas protection from abusive work environments should apply to every worker and not be limited to legally-protected class status based only on race, color, gender, national origin, age, sexual orientation, or disability. Now therefore, the City Council President of the city of Beloit does hereby proclaim the week of October 20th to 26th, 2013, as Freedom from Workplace Bullies Week, and encourages a safe and healthy work environment for all employees. Presented this 21st day of October, 2013.
Thank you. So, item four, Public Hearings. We have a number of them this evening. Item 4A and 4B are related, and if it's the will of my colleagues, I would like to have the -- a single staff report for that one. We'll have to handle the hearings separately. Okay. All right then, 4A.
A resolution authorizing a planned unit development, PUD, master land use plan for the properties located at 2850 and 2900 Milwaukee Road and 1865 Branigan Road. The Plan Commission recommended approval, 4 to 0.
Mrs. Christensen.
The three properties that are subject of this request are the current Arby's building, the old McDonald's site where the McDonald's building was torn down, and then a parcel to the south of that. What they're proposing to do is to build a new strip center on the McDonald's site, move Arby's into that strip mall, and then they would also propose to build, in the future, additional strip malls, so the development would consist of a 9,000-square-foot strip center with drive-through and outdoor seating for the new Arby's, a 6,000-square-foot strip center with no drive-through access, and an 8,425-square-foot strip center with no drive-through access, and then the existing Arby's building would remain but would be reused for another business. So, the PUD process is approval of the master land use plan, the second step is the rezoning to PUD, and the third step is staff approval of the site plans. Plan Commission did review this and did recommend approval, subject to the conditions which are listed in your resolution, which is in your packet, which is that this approval authorizes the development of three separate strip centers for multiple land uses and retention of an existing restaurant building on one parcel for the properties located at 2850, 2900 Milwaukee Road, and 1865 Branigan Road. The parcel shall be combined through application with the city assessors prior to issuance of permits. The proposed drive-through is hereby approved, and a separate conditional use permit is not required. A bypass lane shall be provided to the east of the stacking spaces for the property at 2900 Milwaukee Road. For allowable use and dimensional standard purposes, the regulations applicable in the C-3 community commercial district shall apply to the subject property. For outdoor sign purposes, the development may have one primary and five secondary signs per building. The applicant shall provide a bike rack near the northernmost development that can accommodate at least four bicycles. Parking capacities must comply with the ordinance as one site is developed. Prior to the issuance of a building permit for this project, the applicant shall rezone the subject property to PUD. Architecture review and site plan review will be needed for each phase of development. The proposed outdoor seating area will need a separate conditional use permit, and then our standard condition of ending major changes coming back through this public process, and minor changes being able to be approved administratively. So, the first item on your agenda is actually approval of the master land use plan, and then the second step, the rezoning, is the second item on your agenda this evening. And Plan Commission recommended approval of both.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion for approval.
We have to open a public hearing, then we'll -- thank you. I'd like to open the public hearing on item 4A. Any person wishing to come forward and speak on item 4A, please approach the podium and state your name and address. Second call for persons to come forward and speak on item 4A. Third and final call for persons to come forward and speak on item 4A. Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on item 4A. And do we have any --
I'll make a motion for approval.
Second motion by Lubke, second by Levy. Do we have any questions or comments? Counselor DeForest.
Thank you. I have a question for Ms. Christensen. In the staff summaries, there was discussion about deliberation about whether to keep that aisle between one-way or two-way, and I just wanted to make sure you're comfortable with the way that it ended up in terms of safety and ease of traffic flow for that area.
We're comfortable with the master land use plan. We'll get into more detailed review during site plan review.
Okay.
And make sure that everything works and functions properly. The site plans get sent to engineering, and they review that.
Okay, great. Thank you. I have nothing else. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from councilors? Hearing none, I'll call the matter. All in favor of this master land use plan, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that passes 7-0. I'll now open the public hearing on item 4B, having already received the staff report. Anyone wishing to come forward and speak on item 4B, please approach the podium and state your name and address. Second call for persons to come forward and speak on item 4B. Third and final call for persons to come forward and speak on item 4B. Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on item 4B. Do we have a --
Would we suspend the rules, Mr. President, and proceed to action on the minutes?
Second. Moved for suspension of the rules by Van de Bogart, and second by Lubke. Do we have any questions or comments on suspending the rules? Hearing none, I'll call the matter. All in favor of suspending the rules, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We've suspended the rules by a vote of 7 to 0.
Move approval.
Second.
Moved by Spritzer, second by Levy. Any questions or comments on the underlying matter? Hearing none, I'll call the matter. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes 7-0. Item 4C.
A resolution authorizing a conditional use permit to allow vehicle repair in the CBD II, Central Business District Fringe, for the property located at 856 Fourth Street. The Plan Commission recommended approval, 4 to 0.
Mrs. Christensen.
This property is the former Vic Hansen's dealership and has been vacant since that business closed in 2011. The applicant recently purchased the property and would like to operate a full-scale repair shop with tire sales as an accessory use. The vehicle repair is what requires the conditional use permit. The property as it stands today includes one driveway on Portland Avenue and one driveway on Fourth Street, and includes a 6,228-square-foot building that was constructed in 1956 and a detached shed. It includes one overhead door on the west side, along with quite a bit of Vic Hansen signage, which is proposed to be removed. The surface parking lot extends to the northern and eastern property lines, looks bare and outdated, and we have required some -- included some conditions of approval to require landscape strips, kind of trying to duplicate what Tilly's and Advanced Auto have done with their sites. This parking lot is not currently striped, so there is an approval related to striping as well. Plan Commission reviewed this item on October 9th and held a public hearing. We did have one resident come out from the neighborhood who had concerns about a fence, which is why the last condition is added, restricting the fence height to four feet on the property. Plan Commission did recommend approval, subject to the conditions listed in the resolution, which are this conditional use permit authorizes vehicle repair within the existing building, but vehicle repair may not occur outside of the building. Junk vehicles, as defined in Chapter 7, shall not be stored outside. Vehicles may not be sold onsite unless the applicant obtains an auto dealer's license from the state of Wisconsin. All trash and recycling containers shall be enclosed in accordance with the Architecture Review Code. The applicant shall strip the lot in accordance with Section 8-113 of the zoning ordinance by November 15, 2013. I'd ask that you modify that, move that back to June 1, 2014. The applicant was in and met with Drew, did express some concern about meeting that timeline, and I think, just given that the landscaping is going to be done at that same timeframe, if you wouldn't mind amending it, I think that would be much more helpful for the applicant in getting this rehab and reoccupation done. The applicant shall install landscape strips, as defined and specified in Chapter 34, along the perimeter of the asphalt parking lot facing Portland Avenue and Fourth Street by June 1, 2014, and submit a landscape plan by December 31, 2013. All Vic Hansen signs shall be removed from the building in sight by November 15. All fuel tanks shall comply with SBS 310, and all tire storage shall comply with Chapters 33 and 34.8 of NFPA 1. Any major -- and then the standard about any major changes coming back through this public process, and minor changes being approved administratively, and then the final condition, no fences taller than four feet shall be allowed on the subject property, although there's a restriction on four-foot fences along the street sides already. The concern was that they could put a solid fence behind the building and possibly store junk there, and that could be seen as you go up the hill. And so, we don't really want that kind of a look on that corner. So, that was the rationale behind that condition being added. And Plan Commission did recommend approval unanimously.
Thank you. I'd like to open the public hearing on item 4C. Anyone wishing to come forward and speak on item 4C, please approach the podium and state your name and address. Second call for persons to come forward and speak on item 4C. Third and final call for persons to come forward and speak on item 4C. Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on item 4C, and I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I'll move that we pass 4C with the modification that the deadline set for striping the lot be changed from November 15, 2013, to June 1, 2014.
Do we have a second on that amendment?
Second.
Moved by DeForest, second by Spritzer. Counselor DeForest, did you have a question?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Kinkade.
A question for Ms. Christensen. Is it understood that he'll -- the owner or the petitioner would remove all signage existing on the site and then replace it with signage which is compliant with the existing ordinance?
Yes, or else he would come through for an exception before Plan Commission. I think when Drew met with him, they did find that he may need a slight exception, which then he would come to Plan Commission.
There was some concern with the Planning Commission, although it didn't -- it wasn't a condition of approval. But there are seven or eight lighting pylons that are 20 or 30 feet high. Are those to be removed?
I'm not sure.
So, the petitioner hasn't indicated that he's willing to do that?
I wasn't at the meeting with the applicant, so I'm just not sure.
Okay.
I mean, I can find out and get back to you. I can find out and get back to you on Wednesday, unless it affects your vote tonight.
I think it's important.
You could amend the conditional use to require the removal. And that's within --
Be a start, yeah.
That's within your ability?
We have the Tilly's in at least one residential property in an immediate neighborhood are really first-rate examples of what expectations we may wish to harbor, and so I'd like to do whatever we can and build on what's already done in the neighborhood to add value. So, that would require a motion to have a special use permit to remove or not remove the pylons. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. I would like to add that, have a special -- is this the time to make it, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, I believe we could go ahead and make the additional amendment. This is the time to make --
We request a -- or require a special use permit for the removal of the pylons. Now, I want that to be -- that should be not discretionary. If they're to be left, we should have a special use permit to leave them.
So, do you --
We craft some language on that.
You'd like to make an amendment. Okay. Mr. City Manager, do you have something?
Let me add a brief clarification. I think any of the -- the conditional use permit, as is before you, requires the removal of all the old signage, and new signage will be installed, compliant with the current code and/or on appropriate variance request if one is approved by the Plan Commission. I think it's appropriate to remove all these pylons as a part of that process, but certainly, if they're going to reuse one of the pylons, and it is a legal sign under our contemporary code, they should be allowed to do that. They shouldn't have to tear them all down and go back and replace one.
You think you were talking about the lighting?
I think you're talking about the lighting.
You're not lighting.
You were talking about the lighting standards, not the sign standards.
Because they have many lights out there.
Yes, it is a very well-lit lot when they're all lit.
If you look at this photo, you know, there's a light here. There's lights all over the place.
I got it. I'm sorry. I thought you were talking about the sign pylons, and we don't want to take all of those down if they're going to reuse them.
Right, right. But we're talking about just the lighting standards, and so, if I understand your amendment, Counselor Kinkade, you wish to add a requirement in the conditional use that would require the removal of the freestanding lighting standards?
Yes.
Thank you.
Wouldn't it be better to leave it up to the Plan Commission? Because what if they want to use some of the --
It's already been to Plan Commission, so this isn't a Plan Commission issue at this point.
All right.
But as the City Manager said, would it be redundant to have these torn down, and they need some for lights themselves?
That would be a -- it would seem that that would be discussed, the extent to which one of the seven or eight structures are needed. It would seem that would be something that the Planning Commission would want to consider. That information hasn't been presented to them yet.
Is that a decision they should make, then?
Well, the -- I think it would seem that the Planning Commission would make the recommendation, and the petitioner would -- might explain that he will need one or more of them to remain.
It'd be wasteful to have them torn down, wouldn't it?
I wouldn't want them -- I wouldn't think that they should be torn down until such time as a special use permit is presented.
Would it be -- well, let's go ahead and go through our discussions. Counselor DeForest, you were next.
Yeah, I pushed my button early on because I was wondering, Counselor Kinkade, could you share the discussion that was held at Plan Commission? You said this was discussed at Plan Commission.
It was brief. It was noted that they were there, and I believe that the petitioner said that he thought he might want them, but there was no discussion or resolution for that matter.
I believe that my understanding of the discussion was that the applicant had mentioned that he -- that the freestanding standards were likely redundant and not something he desired to retain. There are two sets of lights that are on existing -- on the light poles, and that he might wish to retain those, although the applicant is in the audience. If he would like to address that issue, we would certainly like to hear from him.
Thank you. That was wonderful.
Yes.
My name is John Thompson. I own Beauty Brothers. I'm from Bevadere, Illinois. I believe that it was discussed, and there was somebody that was in the community that was interested in those lights, that had another property building. He has not approached me again about those. I don't plan on using all of them, and I don't know exactly which ones that I would want to use, but I also don't want it to hold up going through with a special use permit because we would like to get open as soon as possible.
Okay. All right, so you -- does that answer your question?
I have a question. So, it sounds like you're saying you won't use all of them, so the ones that you're not using, you will be taking those down? You won't just be leaving those up?
Correct.
Okay. So, we can be assured that at least half of them will come down? Is that your sense?
I don't really know, to be honest with you. I haven't -- that has been like the least of my worries.
I think our problem is solved. If he's going to take -- use some, then that's what we want, and he'll take the rest down.
Right. Are you hearing our concern that we just want to try to make the corner as slightly and aesthetically pleasing as possible, so we're hoping that you'll be considerate of that and not leaving structures up that you're not using because they're unsightly?
Yeah, and that's part of the reason why we asked for the extension, because we want -- you know, I want it to -- I want the landscaping to look nice, which is going to take a little bit of time, and then we also, if I don't do the landscaping nice, we won't know where to put the parking places and things like that.
Okay.
But I'll definitely take that into consideration, and I can even work with Drew and --
Great.
-- you know, on that. I just want it to be a safe lot, you know, for customers' vehicles if somebody drops off a vehicle, so we just want it to be safe. I mean, I don't have to have it lit up like a Christmas tree or anything.
Right. Thank you.
I don't think it's in his economic best interest to run those lights, all those lights either. Okay. Counselor Spritzer?
A question for Ms. Christensen. I'm not entirely clear. Can you clarify on this? Is there anything in the code that would prevent lights like these from being built if they weren't already here? Are these --
Yes.
So, these are grandfathered?
Yeah, there are lighting standards that would stop, you know, too much lighting from happening.
And these don't meet those standards?
Well, we can't go back just because somebody is doing conditional use. But the conditional use in and of itself, you can make requirements, so if -- I mean, we could add a condition which just says that the applicant shall work with planning staff to reduce the number of lights on site, and then leave it at that, that that's something that's a priority with staff and that we do as part of the landscape and architecture review.
Okay.
We can do that.
Okay. Thank you.
So, we're going to explain to reduce it to current standards. Okay. Doesn't it seem unreasonable?
Yeah, my -- Mr. President?
Yes.
My understanding this was a used car lot at one time, so clearly, people use car sales and like very high light poles, as I understand.
And they like it lit, so that they can see everything there.
We're now at an automobile repair shop, and so I'm assuming then that the staff will review this, and you'll be consistent with the needs of what a repair shop will need and not a used car lot. Fair.
Yeah, but it would be helpful to have that condition in there, that the applicant will work with us on reducing, to actually reduce the lighting on site.
I would think that none of the standards should be kept because they were there for another purpose, which was, no one would argue that used car lots have to have a lot of light.
But architecture review doesn't apply just because of that, because of the code it's in. Really, this is the place to address it.
Okay, thank you.
Through conditional use.
But Counselor DeForest?
Thank you. So, I guess I'm wondering, I'm asking Counselor Kinkade here, if he would be comfortable changing his motion to what Ms. Christensen has recommended, that the applicant will work with the planning staff to reduce the lighting versus requiring a special use permit and holding up the process for the business.
I would be delighted to do that, given that the planning staff has the capacity to require that before moving forward.
If you include it as a condition of approval, then to reduce the standards, you know, to what would currently be allowed or just reducing the lights, then that's what we will do.
Yeah, so number and height would be reduced. Okay, thank you. I'm satisfied with that. I think that would cover it.
All right, so you'd like to amend your -- make your amendment that lighting -- how would this be put? That lighting would be reviewed by staff to reduce to current code standards.
Would you like more guidance in the ordinance? I mean, in the motion?
That would be just fine.
Okay.
I'll second that amendment.
Okay, so, all right then. Do we have those two? Do we have any additional counsel comments or questions? All right then, let's go ahead and we'll vote on the amendments. All in favor of the amendments brought forward by Counselors DeForest and Kinkade? Say aye.
Aye.
Amendments or amendment?
Can we take both amendments separately, please? Can we take the first amendment and then --
Okay, we'll do it separately then. Okay. Counselor DeForest amendment was that --
Change the date.
Change the date of the --
Isn't it reasonable for the owner to get the striping done by 15?
For the striping until June 1.
That was condition number five.
Okay.
Amendment condition number five.
I don't know if I have a second on that either.
There was a second, second by Counselor Spritzer.
Yes.
Great.
All right then, so, okay, are you happy? You're okay with -- okay, not a problem. If we're -- are we good? Let's go and move forward then. All in favor of that amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that amendment passes 7-0. Second amendment is by Counselor Kinkade. That was seconded by Counselor DeForest to reduce the lighting standards to height and numbers required by current code. Everybody clear on that? Okay, so.
The language that we have is the applicant shall work with staff to reduce the amount of lighting on the property to the current height and number standards.
Okay, all right. Okay then, so all in favor of that amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes 7-0. Now to the underlying matter. Do we have a motion?
I move to the merits.
Second.
We didn't have a -- we only had the motion to amend. So, we do need a motion to adopt the ordinance for the -- excuse me, the resolution.
So, I move, Mr. President.
Second.
Lubke DeForest, second by Kinkade. Any further questions or comments? All right then, I'll get this -- geese herded along here. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes 7-0. Good. Move forward.
We're about Robert's rules tonight.
That's right. Well, it is. It's -- as long as we get where we're going and we've got proper motions, I guess we're getting there, so. Okay, so, item 4C passes by 7 to 0, as amended, and now we're on to 4D.
The 2014 Home Investment Partnerships Proposed Budget.
As you may recall, in 2001, we formed a consortium with the city of Janesville and Rock County. And so, this -- we did this so that we would each get funds on a regular basis instead of having to apply to them from the state. So, we get 19% of the funds, and then a Chodo in Beloit gets 15% of the funds. The recommendation from the CDA was to award $76,935, which is the city's share, to the city's housing rehab loan program, and then the $60,738 to a Chodo in Beloit, which would come back to you at a later time. So, that shows the estimated Rock County home consortium budget, our share and the Chodo share, and then the recommendation by the CDA. I went way too fast.
You may need -- you've got it down behind the counter there.
What am I supposed to be aiming at?
You've got to drive the machine over here, so, yeah, I want you back on.
I hit it hard, so it just flowed.
Ah, you got it.
And then, tonight is the night for your public hearing on this CDA recommendation. It'll come back to you at your next meeting for action.
Okay, I'd like to open the public hearing on item 4D. Anyone wishing to come forward and speak on item 4D, please? and speak on item 4D, please approach the podium and state your name and address. Second call for persons to come forward and speak on item 4D. Third and final call for persons to come forward and speak on item 4D. Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on item 4D, there's no action to be taken on this, but does anybody, anybody have any questions or, or comments? Hearing none, we'll just, we'll lay this over. Item 4E.
The 2014 Community Development Block Grant Proposed Budget and Annual Action Plan.
Ms. Christensen.
Um, so this public hearing is both on the budget and the annual plan, or, on the, yeah, the budget and the annual plan. So, we'll start with the public service amount, um, the cap is set at 15%, which is 15% of the grant award, the grant award plus the program income for this year, which sets the cap at $129,300, we did get fewer applications this year, um, we did award to the maximum amount that we could award, um, so we are recommending $21,500 for community action, $12,000 for the Domestic Violence Center, $15,000 for the Home Companion Registry, neither the homelessness prevention and rapid rehousing project and the key for family services didn't apply this year, wrong way, sorry, Hands of Faith, $9,500, Merrill Community Center, $21,500, NHS's homeownership, the solution for eliminating Blight and Beloit, which is their homeownership counseling and foreclosure prevention program, $21,500, Salvation Army's after-school program, which was a new program this year, it was not recommended for any money, um, due to the fact that it was felt like it was a duplication of services, because there are currently after-school programs, um, at the Boys and Girls Club, at the Y, at the Merrill Community Center, um, it was intended to be operated downtown, the thought was that, and they didn't have partnerships ready with the schools, and, um, I think the board felt like it was just a duplication of existing programs we fund, um, and others in the community, State Land Literacy Council, $21,500, Voluntary Action Center, $6,800, for a total of $129,300. I'm doing wrong. Um, and then the rest of the funding would go, there is a 20% cap for planning and admin, which is set at $133,600, and what, what CDA recommended was, was $5,000 for fair housing activities and $125,000 for program administration, for a total of $130,000 under planning and program admin, and then there's $115,000 recommended for our code enforcement program, $125,700 for our housing rehab revolving loan program, and there is no money shown for the Economic Development Revolving Loan Fund, although he didn't apply, we're just showing that 'cause, um, it's a program that's always on the list. And then this is showing the program income, which is, um, we're estimating $39,000 in the Economic Development Revolving Loan Fund, $60,000 in the code enforcement program, $63,000 in the housing rehab revolving loan fund, and $6,000 for NHS, which we are rec, CDA is recommending that we allow to revolve into the program, remain in the program and continue for those programs, 'cause as you can see, like, for Andrew's program, the Economic Development Revolving Loan Fund, he is able to not apply every year because he has good repayments going on, and that is actually the goal of the program, is to allow those funds to revolve and that they don't need to apply for new dollars, NHS as well hasn't applied for new rehab dollars. And what you're also considering on your public hearing agenda tonight, besides the budget, is this action plan, which was included in your packet, um, this is the fifth year of a five-year cycle, so what is in here is what has been consistent with the five-year plan that we prepared four years ago, um, so there's nothing really new in here, it's existing programs that we're continuing to push forward, um, but it is on your agenda for, um, public hearing as well tonight, and also included in your packet was a copy of the public notice, which did go in the paper and didn't get mailed out to our CDVG mailing list, um, and tonight is the night, um, for your public hearing, you'll actually consider this budget and plan at your next meeting, so there's no action this evening, just to listen to any members of the public who have come out tonight.
Thank you. I'll open the public hearing on item 4E, anyone wishing to come forward and speak on item 4E, please approach the podium and state your name and address.
Hello, my name's Eric Williams, I'm Program Manager at Community Action for the Fatherhood Program, my address is 1990 Kalone Court. I'm here to speak on two programs, one is our Skill Enhancement Program, as for people who are employed at least working 20 hours per week, who are interested in, um, changing their economic situation by furthering their education in short-term, um, training programs. Um, the way the program works is persons working at least 20 hours a week, they're receiving food share, so they're, um, meeting the poverty guidelines as far as, uh, the federal poverty guidelines, um, they go to a training program, we assist them with tuition, books, supplies, transportation, childcare, um, and those, that's what those funds are used for. It's, um, an attempt to move them out of poverty, so that's our motto, creating pathways out of poverty. The other program is our Fatherhood Program, which is near and dear to my heart, being Program Manager, that is, um, it's a much-needed program, um, I think that we should probably service a lot more people than we're actually able to, um, it's a three-month commitment, the fathers are there Monday through Fridays from 8:30 to 1:30, um, it's three phases of the program, we've also partnered with Can Do Industry, so the last month of the program, they're actually in a work experience where they're working eight hours a day prior to, um, us placing them in employment, um, the reason that that works so well is because we get to work out some of the wrinkles as far as transportation, their living situations, and most of our participants, 98%, um, have some, um, type of criminal justice issues, and they also have ridges in their child support, so, um, it's a win-win situation because, first of all, it takes $35,000 to house a person in the penal institution, so if we can take that person, get them employed, catch them up on their ridges as far as child support, um, it actually saves the taxpayer money, it puts them in a better position, but I'm, one of the things that I'm really big on is the lifestyle and who they are as people, so that whole first month, Monday through Friday, um, we're talking about the cognitive process, who you are, you know, what their, their aspirations are, we also created, um, a Monday night, uh, meeting because it's a, it's a, it's a way of staying connected, so they have a, like, Overcomers Meeting every Monday night, we start with food and can invite the kids in so that we can stay connected and help them further develop in that process, um, and most importantly, our recidivism rate right now is at 4%, that's like, that's the thing that I'm most proud of, because as long as I can keep them out of the system, I can continue to work with them, so, those are the two paragraphs that I'm here to talk about tonight, and I thank you for your support.
Thank you. Do we have any other persons wishing to come forward and speak on item 4E? Second call for persons to come forward and speak on item 4E? Third and final call for persons to come forward and speak on item 4E? I'll close the public hearing on item 4E, and that's just, do you have something you wish to add, Counsel Lady?
Question. Yes, I have a question for Julie, if that's okay. The time that I was on the, the CDA committee, they, I, I believe they had set up goals, and one of them, I thought, was to address the homeless situation, and I'm not seeing where we are allocating a lot of dollars towards that cause, has, did their goals change?
Um, they didn't set local goals this year, um, but, I mean, they did fund homeless programs, and we did fund them, I think, to, close to the level they requested, so the key and the homelessness prevention, they didn't apply, so we didn't give them zero, they didn't apply, so, I mean, we really gave those that are serving the homeless population, I think, close to what they've requested.
Okay, and any other issue with the, I believe the fair housing, where we allocated $5,000, I think I asked this question last year and maybe the year before, I think the last few years we allocated that amount, are they using that amount?
We allocated, I think, $15,000 last year, um, what Terry found is, uh, we're still spending older dollars, so she didn't think she needed
Okay.
the full amount, which is why we reduced it, um, there's been less activity this year, um, but how they spent the money this year, we had less cases this year, but what they spent their money on this year was we hired an intern who came in the summer and did a lot of education, updated the website, created reshares, there's a fair housing wall on third floor with information and pamphlets, Hannah did a real fantastic job, and you actually have a very active VOC who, I mean, they're meeting every month, other month now, but they're working on their bylaws, which will come to you in 14, and so they are, they do have quorum, they are meeting and discussing fair housing, and, um, from what I can tell, they do seem to really care about this issue and are taking it seriously and trying to see what they can do.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor DeForest?
Thank you, um, I am pleased to see that we are funding, uh, the Domestic Violence Emergency Shelter and the Hands of Faith Emergency Shelter at the amounts they requested, so in response to the concern that you raised, Counsel Lady, um, I agree that, I'm glad that we're making sure we're funding, um, prevention homelessness services. I did have one question about the amount funded for our housing rehab program, um, I see that the projected amount that will be spent next year is $63,000, do you think if we funded more money for rehab that we might be able to get more rehab requests 'cause we wanna help support the homeowners and landlords who would like to use that, that funding?
Um, right now, we're, the issue we're having right now with housing rehab is that people with the property values going down, they don't have enough equity.
Okay.
Um, so that's the problem we're having right now, and we may have to come back to you, um, in the near term about a temporary, what can we do, 'cause our issue, um, as a staff, is that we have people who have violations, like, let's say, a roof, not trash and debris, we're talking physical, structural issues of the house, and they don't have the money, and they can't get a bank loan 'cause of the equity issue, they can't get one of our loans because of the equity issue, and do we bite the bullet and look at either forgivable or grants so that from a city perspective, we have houses in our neighborhoods that are worth having, instead of letting them continue to deteriorate and then we tear them down when they come up on tax foreclosure, you know, is that solution, but we do have enough funding that we're comfortable with the amount we put in there, um, we do have home money as well.
Good.
So I think we're, we're comfortable with the number that we have.
I'm really glad to hear that, because I know it doesn't really solve the problem, we just keep finding a homeowner who really can't afford to replace their roof, or if they have a huge home to do the painting, or hire someone to do the painting, so I'm glad to hear that, so the staff's planning on bringing that to us soon?
Yeah, well, I'm not sure how quickly, um, but, just because Terry's out the next two weeks, but, and she's working on it with Christie, um, some other, we haven't even shared this with Larry yet, so I haven't even run it by him yet, so, um...
Good, well, I like it.
But, because Terry brought this to me last week at, at our staff meeting, that this declining property values on the residential side is still, we're still haven't come back from that, and so you still have people that, you know, are kind of upside down on, on their mortgages, and then, so then they can't, and they can't afford to replace the roof or, to do, and, you know, we're talking, like, bigger issues, 'cause if somebody's roof is leaking, you know, it just continues to cause damage, and so we would do it for those kind of situations, we would have a limited amount of things that we would do the loans for, or the grants for, and then there would be a, like, a three-year window that we would do it, and then we would be done or revisit it to see if we needed it to continue, um, because I think it is one of the tools, instead of just ticketing people, um, because if they can't afford to fix it, ticketing them doesn't help anything.
Right.
So if we can come up with a solution, and what Christie's been finding is people just don't have the equity, um, and so then we have to say no.
Right.
And another, you know, just offering them even a 0% loan just adds more debt, and they just can't afford to have more debt.
Right, thank you for troubleshooting it, I appreciate that.
Counselor Lady?
Just, uh, just to piggyback on that, but I, I think that's gonna be good, and I think you're gonna probably see a lot of people take advantage of that, um, I've had two people in the last couple of weeks stop me and say just what you said, I keep getting citations, but I can't afford to get it fixed, so I think, uh, when we roll this out or when you move forward, you're gonna see a big number, so I hope you're prepared for that, you're gonna have a large, I think you're gonna have a large number of people that's gonna try to take advantage of this, so I hope that we think, think big when we get ready to roll it out, because I don't think this is something that's gonna start out small and grow, I think this is gonna start out big and shrink, so...
And we may just have to tighten it up a little and require some, um, monetary amount on their part to bring to the table, that it's not just us giving them free money, that they have to be willing to contribute some share to it as well.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Spritzer?
Uh, just a question on, uh, items where there's multiple programs in one line, like the Community Action one that was spoken to, uh, is it up to the organization's discretion how to distribute that money between the programs, or is it divided half and half? I was just curious how that works.
Um, they divide it, it's divided based on the budget that they put in their application, but we do allow them to kind of flex that money, because you will find, you know, they'll think they needed it a certain way, but as you get to the end of the year, you need more money for one program, and so we kind of let them move that money around a little bit, and that's part of the reason why they apply for two programs together, so that they can do that.
Thank you.
Do we have any other questions or comments? Well, hearing none, I think we can move on to item 4F then.
The 2014 Operating Library and Capital Improvements Proposed Budgets.
Ms. Yark?
Thank you, uh, this is the formal public hearing on the city's operating and capital budgets for 2014, uh, we did present the budget to the council at the last meeting two weeks ago, and, uh, had a fairly comprehensive review, I believe, at that time, so tonight's presentation is gonna be somewhat abbreviated, uh, to give the public an opportunity to, to comment on the budget this evening. Uh, just to summarize the budget, uh, the total budget for next year for all funds, $91 million, uh, this is an increase of $406,000 over the current year budget, uh, just under one-half of 1%. The general fund portion of the budget is $30.9 million, uh, this is an increase of $330,000, uh, just a little bit over 1% over the current year budget. And our enterprise funds, which are comprised primarily of our utility operations, our water, sewer, stormwater systems, also includes our transit operation, uh, the ambulance fund, and our golf course and cemetery funds, uh, total budget, $18.4 million combined, uh, an increase of a little over $102,000, and again, just a little bit over, uh, one-half of 1%. So as you can see, uh, total-wise, the budget's fairly flat from the current year, there aren't any significant changes over the 2013 budget. This next slide gives you a little bit more comprehensive picture of all the different funds, uh, general fund, debt service, our special revenue funds, which are primarily our tax increment districts, it's all, also included in the special revenue funds is our library, and then, of course, I just, uh, reviewed the enterprise funds, uh, the internal service funds are comprised of our insurance programs, both our health dental plan for employees, as well as our liability, uh, coverages, and also includes our, uh, equipment maintenance operations and our public works department, we account for that as a internal service fund. And lastly, our capital improvements budget for next year, uh, again, the total budget, $91.4 million, uh, an increase of $400,000, a little bit under one-half of 1% over the 2013 budget. Uh, this chart gives you a breakout for the general fund of our revenues, and as we've indicated in the past, a significant portion of the city's general fund money comes from, uh, primarily state, uh, funds that we receive from the state of Wisconsin, uh, about 62% of our total revenues in a general fund are from that source. About sixty-two percent of our total revenues in a general fund are from that source. Next highest revenue category that the city has are the taxes that we generate, primarily the property tax. That's about twenty-six percent of our revenue sources. And then the rest of the revenue categories are primarily charges that the departments make for various services and fees that they bill for to help fund the departmental operations. The total general fund again is thirty-point-nine million dollars for next year. And this is how the money is allocated from a spending perspective. And as you can see, most of the general fund operations are for the public safety departments, both the police department and the fire department. They comprise almost two-thirds of the general fund spending from those two operations. Next would be the public works department, a little bit over six million dollars. Finance and administrative services, three-point-six million. Community development, one-point-one million. And general government, which is some of the rest of the administrative operations of the city, just a little bit over a million dollars. And again, the total, thirty-point-nine million dollars for next year. This is the proposed municipal tax levy for next year, this city's portion. This is how it's broken out. The total is fourteen-point-two million dollars, an increase of a little bit over half a million dollars, about three-point-eight-five percent over the current year's tax levy. And this gives you some perspective to see how it's distributed. The bulk of it obviously is used by the general fund at the six-point-nine million and our debt service levy at four-point-eight million. One item that I want to point out for this year that's new is the golf course. Years past, we have not allocated any portion of the tax levy for the golf course operation. And for next year, we're suggesting fifty thousand dollars of the levy be allocated to the golf course to help fund the operations out there. Again, the total tax levy, fourteen-point-two million. You'll see a projected tax rate amount there of just under ten dollars and eighty cents per thousand. I do want to point out that that's a proposed number at this point. We have not received our final assessed value numbers from the state of Wisconsin until we receive those numbers. We're just estimating at this point what the tax rate may possibly be. So that number most likely will change by the time we calculate the tax bills early in December. This chart gives you sort of a graphical portrayal of the tax rate and where it's gone. As you can see, it's increased the last several years. And the reason for that increase is primarily as a result of our property tax base. And as you'll see in this next slide here, this gives you our assessed as well as our equalized values of our properties in the city. And for the last four years, there's been a fairly steady decrease in those numbers. And that's what's driven the increase in the tax levy or tax rate primarily. During the course of the finalizing the budget, there have been a couple of changes since the budget was originally prepared and presented to the council. One of those has been a decrease in the state highway aids that we receive. We did get notice a couple of weeks ago after the budget had already been completed and presented that we're going to receive about thirty-one thousand dollars less than what we expected. So we did increase the tax levy amount from what was originally included in the budget to compensate for that reduction in revenue from the state. And another change that was made that impacts our special revenue operations is an additional school resource officer for the school district to assist with the new middle school that's being constructed next year. There was a commitment on the city's part to provide one additional school resource officer to the school district. And we've included that in the budget for half-year funding for next year. And that will be covered in our special revenue fund, not out of the police department operations and the general fund. We do get some financial assistance from the school district for those positions. And for this particular one here is about thirty-four thousand dollars. And we have some fund balance in our special revenue fund to cover the difference, which would be seventeen thousand dollars approximately. And with that, the next item to be considered would be action on the budget at the next council meeting on the fourth of November, which we historically generally have presented to the council the first meeting in November for council action. And with that, I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have.
All right, open the public hearing. If you could stand by, Mr. Yark, I'm sure we'll have some questions. I'd like to open the public hearing on item four F. Anyone wishing to come forward and speak on item four F, please approach the podium and state your name and address.
Gary Fields, I'm here for the BPMA, Boyd Property Management Association.
And your address, sir?
My address is Rockton, Illinois.
Okay.
Okay. We understand that there's some proposed changes for this year in regards to the inspections and fees to inspections. So would you say a few questions on that? Don't know if they can be answered tonight, but we wanted to at least express our concerns and either agreements or disagreements. So first of all, I'd like to say that we agree with the third visit. If people are being negligent, require three visits, it should require a fee. There is some concerns or questions as far as the inspections. We want to make sure that when they are done, that they're done on time. It's been in the past that some of them have been done early, and that's a concern for us at this point because of the second inspection fees. So another question would be is what inspections does this apply to? Is it only the three-year inspections? Is it the section eight inspections as well? Is it the fire inspections as well? So what inspections does this fee apply to? Would be one of the questions. Also, just curious, what's the statistics? How many times is there a second inspection required out of all inspections? And how many times is there a third inspection required? So what kind of numbers are we looking at as far as, you know, how can we help reduce that number as well if we understand what that number is? I understand the second inspection is if there's, well, actually, back up, if there's a first inspection in the fire, the smoke detector or the carbon dioxide detectors are not functioning at the time of the first inspection, that there would be a fifty-dollar fee basically imposed for the, at that time because the second inspection to come back and inspect those. That's where the fifty dollars comes in. Those are mechanical devices. So that's one of the reasons for not having early inspections. You know, if we're able to be there during the inspection, we can remedy that at that time. The other question is if we go in there twenty-four hours in advance and make sure that they're functioning and the tenant signs off that they're functioning and we're not able to make the inspection and for some reason they're not working, is that fifty-dollar fine still If there's multiple things on that first inspection, so if a carbon dioxide detector's not working and let's say there's a handrail that needs to be fixed or something else, if they have to come back for that secondary thing for the handrail, is that fifty dollars also apply then for the smoke detector or carbon dioxide detector at that time because they have to come back for the secondary thing anyways? And if there's any change in the inspection, the landlord needs to be notified. I know there's been a few times that I've experienced going to the inspection and the inspector doesn't show up if they happen to call in sick that day or whatever. There's no, nobody calls any of the appointments for that day and lets them know. So we end up having to wait and then I have to pay them to call just to find out that they're not coming. So I think some more communication that way needs to be, needs to be worked out as well. And then also closure letters for each inspection to make sure that when it is satisfied, that it is, we do get a letter of closure. So we can put that in our file as well. I don't think that's followed all the time. But as far as the third inspection, you know, we agree. If you can't get it done, then you should be penalized.
All right, do we have any other persons wishing to speak on item four F? Second call for persons to come forward and speak on item four F. Third and final call for persons to come forward and speak on item four F. Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on item four F. Do we have any additional questions or comments, Counselor DeForest?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I do have two questions. One is I'm wondering, Ms. Christensen, if, when you respond to those questions, could you also CC us on those responses so we're familiar with the answers to those as well? And then my other question has to do with the proposed additional school resource officer. I do want to support the school safety needs and I understand with the new school reconfiguration, the need for an additional school resource officer, but I also want to make sure that that officer doesn't take away from an officer that we have on the street. And so I just, I want a clarification that is this contingent on the school district of Beloit receiving the grant that they've applied for? If they don't receive it, will we, will we pay for the full amount and not take away from an officer on the street? So I'm concerned about that. I don't know if Chief could answer that?
I can answer that very quickly. The grant is one that we applied for to cover the total cost of it. The school district pays, provides that reimbursement to the city under contract. And the amount of the reimbursement would be increased to cover the officer. And we are talking about adding an additional officer, one additional sworn officer so we don't have to reduce strength of officers, quote, "on the street," unquote.
Great, thank you.
All right, do we have any other additional questions or comments from counselors? Hearing none, we'll close this and take up the matter on the next meeting. That concludes all of our public hearings this evening. All right, item five is citizens' participation. We've reached the point in the agenda for citizens to speak to the council about issues that are coming before us or may become before us in the future. Council members may not act on any request at this meeting but may refer a speaker to staff for assistance. We ask that you hold your comments three minutes or less and refrain from personal attacks of any kind. Do we have any persons wishing to come forward and speak on item, on citizens' participation? Second call for persons to come forward and speak under citizens' participation. Third and final call for persons to come forward and speak on items five, citizens' participation. Hearing none, I'll close item five and move on to the consent agenda, item six. All items listed on the consent agenda are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless the council member so requests. In which event, the item will be removed from the general order of business and considered at this point of the agenda. Do we have any interest in pulling anything off of the agenda? Hearing none, the consent agenda consists of items six A through six D.
Motion for approval.
Second. Move by Lukey, second by Levy. All in favor of the consent agenda state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda passes seven-zero. Item seven, ordinances, there are none. Appointments, none. So we'll move on to item nine, counselor activities and upcoming events. Counselor DeForest.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was pleased to attend the ribbon cutting at the new swimming pool at the high school. And I do want to emphasize, I said the new swimming pool at the high school. It certainly should be considered a gem of the school district of Beloit, but it also is a pool for the community. It's an asset for all of us. I'm excited because the school district has been very open about opening that facility up to the community, planning to have community swim times, family swim times, swimming lessons for kids in our area. So I'm pleased that we continue to collaborate with them, to continue to provide beautiful, top-notch facilities for residents and to attract new people, hopefully to relocate and live here because Beloit is a fantastic place to live. I do also want to just give a shout out to two local residents, Jenny and Bill, and they're both watching at home. I spoke to them at two different events. Bill was actually at the ribbon cutting and shared that he watches us at home faithfully. I'm surprised how many people say they watch. So thank you for being interested in government and watching, Bill and Jenny Lucas. I appreciate that you're involved in government by watching and staying informed. And just want to remind the public that access to the internet through the library and you can have access to all of our packets, they're available to the public. And then, of course, if you have any questions or comments or input that you want to give on any item that is there, you certainly can contact us. Even if you cannot be here present with us, if you're watching from home, you can still call us or email us and share with us your concerns and feedback because we certainly want to represent them here. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Counselor Van de Vaart.
I had the opportunity last week to participate in the hundred-and-fifteenth annual meeting of the Wisconsin League of Municipalities. I attended the meeting in Green Bay along with Council President Haynes and with our city manager. We had a number of educational sessions and informative sessions that were well worth attending. The high point was the point when our own city manager, Larry Arft, was elected as the president of the League of Municipalities. The point being that this is the first time that a non-elected public official has been appointed as the president of this organization in over thirty years. Thirty years ago, an individual got on the list as second vice president, first vice president, and then into the president's slot. When he was an elected official, he switched hats and at some point then became the city manager in Wisconsin. And then he fulfilled his commitment, if you would, and then became the president. So Larry was the first non-elected public official to have this responsibility and honor. And both President Haynes and I were there at the time when he accepted that responsibility. And we were very proud for him, proud of him rather, and proud of our community for having basked at least a little bit in some of the recognition that he received. So that was my report.
Counselor Kincaid.
Congratulations, Larry. It's truly an honor. I went to the high school and their swimming pool, it's now called an nadatorium. And it was, it was an astonishing event. If anyone who's ever thought, had second thoughts about supporting the referendum way back with seventy-one million dollars, they just had to be there and at some of the other events to see how, the enthusiasm, the dedication that the staff and the kids have. But the nadatorium was an order of magnitude over anything else I've seen. It did remind me of when I was at the Y a few years ago and I earned the tadpole, minnow, fish, flying fish, and then finally shark. But it just didn't compare to what these guys are going through. And so of those of us who had a misspent youth, that youth that really didn't indulge in swimming, we just have to go over there and enjoy what the kids are doing. That's all I have today.
I'm glad you made it to Shark.
Counselor Lupe.
I too want to add my accolades to our city manager. This is quite an honor he's bringing to Beloit in the state of Wisconsin, but again, another wonderful honor for Beloit. I was also honored to represent the council at the Robinson School reopening a couple of weeks ago. And last week at the Angel Museum for their new haunting. And I too joined fellow councilors at the high school tonight. And just for the public, you're invited tomorrow morning at 6:00 a.m. The pool's open for public use and I'm sure we're gonna see a lot more usage on weekends and evenings. But if you want to get in the pool at 6:00 tomorrow morning, we'll see you down there. Or laps, lap swim, yes. Leave your ducks at home and stuff, just lap swim, 6:00 a.m. Thank you.
Councillor Spritzler.
On Saturday, I participated in another workday at the Merrill Neighborhood Sharon Garden. And this coming Saturday for Halloween will be the pumpkin painting festival, which is free to the neighborhood. So from 11:00 to 2:00, please come by and paint a pumpkin and grab some lunch. It'll be a great event. On that note, wish everybody a happy and safe Halloween as you're trick-or-treating. And next weekend is also the last farmer's market of the season. So be sure to come down and grab some fall produce and see the costume parade.
Thank you, and councillor Levy.
I would like to, first of all, just thank the students that are here this evening, watching how government works. And I saw a couple of them in the hallway and I told them we're gonna be here at about 12:30 and it kind of looks like we're headed that way now. 11:30? But seriously, this is where, when you want something done in the city, that this is where your voice is heard along with the school board meetings as well. So even though you're sitting there for a class, we want you to know that it's just as important, if you're sitting out there, your friends are saying, there's nothing to do in the city of Beloit. This is where you come and let us know what you would like to see, because we're all getting up there in age that, you know, we, we forget. Some of us are already up there, but this is where your voice is heard. If you hear, if you see anything you don't like or thing that you want, this is where you come. So spread the word. We want you to pack it out here sometime to let us know, you know, let your voice be heard, because you're, you're the part of the community as well. And your voice is very important, so I want to thank you for coming this evening as well.
Thank you, and I don't think I'll have anything to add today, so we'll move on to item 10A.
The Fall Yard Waste Presentation.
Mr. Boyson.
Good evening. I'm, I'm pleased to be able to highlight today the annual upcoming City of Beloit Fall Waste, Fall Yard Waste Program that will extend from November 4th through November 22nd. The Curbside Collection Program is a free service to the community, picking up leaves, grass clippings, and garden debris. The curbside collection requirements involve containers that meet the specifications, which are either paper yard waste bags or biodegradable bags, like the Back to Nature bags, or a clean trash can with a volume of under 39 gallons and a weight of under 60 pounds. Also, there's a curbside collection sticker program for the pickup of brush and shrubbery. Sheets are five, five for $7.50, available at City Hall's Treasurer's Office, Public Works Operations, Grinnell Hall, and Leisure Services. And it's important, important part of the program is that it does require that the brush and shrubbery be contained in bundles that are less than four feet long and four feet in diameter. Another part of the program is the Leaf Vacuum Subscription Program, extending from October 29th through November 16th. The fee, as in past years, is $100 for the seasonal subscription fee. The, in that case, the residents or property owners would blow or rake the leaves to the terrace, and then they would be picked up by the city's vacuum sweeper. And one additional option is Fall Yard Waste Compost Center at the Leafland Compost Center at 6711 South Lawrence, Beloit, Wisconsin. And the details of their program that they set from year to year can be found by either checking their website or calling them at 608-364-1909. So that summarizes the, the program. If there's any questions, we'd be happy to try to answer them. Jodine Saunders, our supervisor of our refuse and recycling programs, is with me also tonight. So if there's any questions, we'd be happy to try to answer those.
Do we have any councillor questions or comments? Councillor Vandemarck.
Just, I think I got it, Mr. Boyson, but the bags are free, but you gotta pay for the shrubbery, is that it? Buck fifty?
That's right. It's a free program for those, the basic leaves and grass clippings, but the shrubbery and branches require the sticker for the fee.
Mr. City Manager.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that Fall Yard Waste, which is primarily directed toward leaves and a certain amount of garden cleanup, is free during this season as long as it is containerized, as Mr. Boyson has indicated. However, there is no waiver of the fee on bundles of brush. So if you have tree trimmings or large-scale bushes that are trimmed that you have to bundle, you still have to use the yard waste sticker through the fall free season for any bundles of brush.
Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions or comments? Hearing none, thank you. All right, item 11A.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to apply for a community development investment grant from the Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation.
Mr. Yaqui.
And thank you. I would like to begin by acknowledging a guest we have tonight, Mr. Mark Membrino from Hendricks Commercial Properties is here tonight, representing the developer. He'll be on hand after I make my formal remarks to accept any questions that you might have. I'm actually gonna be taking things a little bit out of order tonight. I'm gonna be talking about the Idle Industrial Sites Grant Program to begin with.
That'd be fine.
All right. For the past over 120 years, the Iron Works has been home to one of Beloit's most significant economic engines. Known as the Beloit Corporation for most of its history, the company generated wealth, employed thousands of individuals, and physically dominated a large portion of Beloit's central business district. Despite this long history of success, as we all know, the Beloit Corporation declared bankruptcy in 1999 and closed in 2000, resulting in the loss of thousands of jobs. After the facility closed, it remained abandoned and began to fall into disrepair until it was purchased by Canon Diane Hendricks in 2001. Since that time, the Hendricks, through Hendricks Commercial Properties, or HCP, have renamed the site the Iron Works and have invested significant private funds into its transformation into a viable mixed-use facility. Over 300,000 square feet have been renovated. Thus far, in 13 companies are located there employing approximately 461 individuals. The City of Beloit has also been a supporting partner in the development of the Iron Works. We have invested into the reconstruction of Third Street and the renovation and expansion and creation of public parking lots to support the facility. Despite the continuing efforts to revitalize the site, over half of the site's square footage, about 500,000 square feet, remains vacant and underutilized. HCP has created redevelopment plan for the remainder of the facility, which they would like to implement over the next 12 to 18 months. When fully occupied, up to 1,500 people may be employed on the site. As market rental rates in downtown Beloit do not support the cost of renovating these older spaces into modern functional spaces, HCP is seeking financial assistance to support the next phases of its renovation. Fortunately for us, the Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation, or WEDC, has recently created and funded the Idle Industrial Sites Program. This program offers Wisconsin communities up to $1 million for the implementation of redevelopment plans for industrial sites of over 10 acres that have been idle, abandoned, or underutilized. Grant funds can be used for a variety of activities, and with our proposal, we are seeking funds to help to fray the costs associated with constructing the new center spine road. And I have a image later that I'll show you to depict that particular infrastructure improvement. With this grant, the city will be an applicant and will act as a pass-through agent, and any funds received by the city will be transferred to HCP. As a pass-through agent, the city will expend no city funds on the project. Again, there will be no financial exposure to the City of Beloit if we are awarded one or both of these grants. HCP's investment in the project is estimated at over $30 million, which is well in excess of both grants' match requirements. If WEDC awards a grant to the City of Beloit, the city and HCP will enter into a formal development agreement that will define the roles and responsibilities of each party before any funds are released to the developer. And the deadline for the idle sites is coming up on November 1st. So with that, I have just a couple slides here, and Mark, if you want to jump in, feel free to do so. But the first image here is just basically the site itself, the area that's delineated in blue. This is the actual site that we are submitting for both grant proposals. This is kind of a site plan. You can see, kind of towards the center, over towards the right, you can see where that center spine road is gonna be proposed. This is actually looking through that new roadway, so you can see there'd be development opportunities on both the south side and the north side. And the image on the bottom on this particular slide shows the view from across the river. And this is another view from across the river. On the far left-hand side of this image, you can see that center spine roadway area. And this is kind of looking from the southeast, looking at where they just recently took down a building to create this foreground parking lot. And in the background, you can see the proposed location for the new YMCA. And this is another kind of an artist image showing it, depicting it from the other side of the river, kind of a nighttime view. So that concludes my remarks. I'd be happy to take any questions. Mr. Membrino is also available to take any questions that you might have.
All right, we'll be handling these two in orders for our consideration. Do we have, I'd like to get a motion to approve first to bring that, those, any questions to the table?
The motion, second.
Moved by Levy, second by Lukey. Councillor DeForest.
Thank you. Those drawings were in our packet. Do you have those as handouts? It's really hard to see them from here. I can't, maybe I'm getting old, like we said, and I can't see the details. Do you have some of those with you so we can have a closer look?
Not, yes, I do, I have them on a flash drive.
Okay. That center spine road, will that actually be a city road that will be responsible for maintaining?
It'll be a private road, correct, Mr. Membrino?
Correct.
Okay. And then, I know I asked this upstairs, but just to be clear, are there any job creation requirements for either one of these grants?
There are no requirements, but the more that we can document or propose, the higher our proposal will, will score.
And I also want to ask for clarification, because in the resolution itself, I believe it's for the idle grant, I don't believe it's for the other grant proposal. It's proposed that the project would create 185 new jobs, which is great, we'll take any new jobs we can get. But you cited 1,500, that's quite a far cry from the 185.
It could be up to 1,500. I think they have already committed to some projects or working on that 185 number, but long-term, they'd be pushing, they hope, that 1,500 number.
Okay. And this is a question maybe from Mark. Is, is HCP's intent of development contingent on the Y's decision to relocate there?
Absolutely not.
Okay.
Absolutely not. We have a lot of intent with the YMCA. We want to move forward with them, we'd love to move forward, what a great amount of that would be, but it's not contingent upon that.
Okay.
The grant is for the road construction, which is about $6 million. I think we have to match 30%, or three times, I should say.
Yeah, 30% for this one and 75% for the other.
Well, that's what the, and what that does, can we bring up some slides if you gotta, just bring up.
Thank you.
What the road's going to do is gonna take a part of the building, which would be very difficult to lease, and create access points. So that road that runs up and down will do two things. Everything to the right will be a lot more accessible, it'll create parking, and it'll get more desirable real estate, more desirable jobs. We have a company right now that's, we're on, we're probably signing a lease in the next 30 days. It'll create 100 jobs, software jobs, it's a, it's gonna be hu- huge impact for the city. And part of that is because of what we are proposing. The other piece of it is on the riverside where that, you can see that turnaround. That turnaround there is gonna create third-floor offices that'll be absolutely spectacular, that will overlook the river. You can't find those anywhere. And we had Universal AET, which came into this city and just loves Beloit and has been a huge proponent for Beloit. And we are hoping that someday that they'll take those offices, but if they don't, they'll be accessible for somebody else. But they're, they're, they're in 100,000 square foot of space, or they will be by the 1st of January. So I mean, we have strong commitments, strong interest from the community. We are really excited about working with Andrew and Larry and all of you and the state to help make this a spectacular project and a huge economic driver for the community. Thank you for considering it.
I do have one question, as you're speaking about the great view of the river. This is Flood Plain, and, and so I'm wondering about the seawall that's being constructed. And I can't tell from that picture, how far is that seawall extending?
We haven't designed it yet. We have to work with city and figure that all out, that's part of the process.
Do you foresee any obstacles with the DNR?
We, we've already met with the DNR as part of the variance that we got to actually build that south side. And we have to raise the finished floor of that section of the building two feet in order to comply with their demands.
Okay, so you have received a commitment from the DNR on the variances, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, that's important, okay. And then finally, just a last question and clarification for the public. So we're serving as a pass-through, there's no risk to the city involved at all, is that correct, Andrew?
None whatsoever. All the matches being provided by the developer, over $30 million.
Great, thank you very much, that's the end of my questions.
Councillor Spritzler.
I just had one question, actually, based on the picture that was just up there, if we can put that back up for a moment. From, looking from the east side of the river, can you just summarize what, what would change in terms of what we're looking at? What would actually be visible from across the river? I can't quite tell in the picture. Can you just give a summary of what we'd be seeing differently from what's there now?
There's actually a good rendering of, of the, if you want to. That, that, well, okay, so here is what is the proposed, that what's to the right, the silver and the windows, that's under construction right now. I don't know how familiar you are, but there's a big power station that comes in with all the utilities. We just took down those lines. That's gonna be torn down, and that's where that turnaround that I was talking about, that's, that'll be an entry point for those third-floor offices. So that is proposed, what we're doing there. And then to the left is that center spine road, which we intend to keep the structure, the structural steel that's there as an architectural piece that would draw people to this facility. So that would stay, the road would be created. And then to the left, I think if you go back one. You can see on the bottom is that, the brick that's there, we would maintain that brick, but we open up probably more windows than what's shown there. We're still in design, you know, these are what we're, this is what we're contemplating, but it's gonna be truly fantastic. And we intend to draw a lot more businesses to the Iron Works because of it.
If you would, if you're standing here, you think of yourself standing at the landing. And in this image, think about your standing outside of Merrill and Houston's.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Would it be easiest if I emailed these images to you, each of you?
Yes, thank you very much. Do you have any other questions? Councillor DeForest, did you have anything to add?
How tall will the seawall be?
It still, it needs to be designed. It still, it needs to be designed.
Okay. But it's not going to be like 15 feet or some, I'm just trying to get a sense, we don't want to be looking at a giant wall along the river there. Okay.
We, we, I don't think that's going to be a concern.
I think it's like one and a half feet, right?
Is that it?
It's pretty minimal.
It's got to be at least two feet, I would assume, to be finished.
Yeah, it's probably going to be a little bit higher than the finished floor elevation, which is up two. We thought that was 18 inches, but apparently it's 24, and the seawall would be a little bit higher than that.
Correct. You're correct, Larry. We are required by the DNR only to bring it up a foot and a half, but we are going to bring it up two feet in our design. That correction on that, you are correct. I think you want to, just to be safe.
You don't have a sense of how far along the bank that seawall will extend? I'm just trying to visualize the bank and if it will create any barriers to the rest of the visual look of that bank on that side, but I can't think of any.
We have.
We'll have to go down to the bridge. How far will it have to go down?
Well, we still have to design that with the city.
Okay. All right. Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
All right. Do we have any other questions or comments? All right, we have a red, motion and second on item 11A, which is the Community Development Investment Grant application. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes seven zero.
I'd move approval of 11B, then also consent.
Second. Thank you. Motion by Van de Bogart, second by Lupe. Do we have any additional questions or comments on the Idle Industrial Sites Grant Application? Hearing done, I'll call the matter. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes seven zero. And item 12.
Move approval.
Moved by Levy.
I second.
Second by DeForest. All in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.